Glad that you were able to make it today. We want to remind you, after the meeting, we have lunch provided, so if you want to stick around. I think we have about $500 worth of pizza and some doughnuts and some refreshments, and so you. We'd like to have you stick around. We're going to start the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you please take roll.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Millaway.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here. Okay, item number one, to dispense the reading in the minutes of the regular meeting dated December 18. Oh, you want to know, is there anybody here with any business? That is going to need to leave that would want to make a presentation prior to the meeting? Any department heads or nobody? East Gate, Jobs, Ohio, no?
I don't have an introduction. Introduction?
Yeah. Good morning, my name is David Christopher, I'm the new Trump County Engineer. And I brought with me my, my new. Administrator Chief Deputy Engineer, and that's Gary Tenary, Gary, just stand up, please. Gary's been in the industry for what, 40, 35 years, Gary?
Forty years.
Forty years. He's a PE and a PS, so he's one of the most qualified people in the county to be working in the office along with me. I appreciate Gary's help, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
This is Gary Schaefer here. Well, Gary Schaefer, who's the Deputy Engineer, will continue to be the Deputy Engineer, he's been doing a great job. I'm, I'm happy that he decided to stay. Thank you very much. Okay, any other introduction? Any, any other business prior to our meetings? Okay. All right. We'll start on the agenda. Item number one, to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated December 18, 2024. Accept and approve that your reporting of the meeting is official meeting minutes. Two, to dispense with reading in the minutes of the reorganizational meeting dated January 6, 2025. Accept and approve that your reporting of the meeting as the official meeting minutes. Three, to approve the bills. Fourth. To approve the payment of the second installment of the Valley Vision 2050 allocation in the amount of $500,000. The goal of the Valley Vision 2050 is to stabilize and expand existing businesses. Increase public awareness of the arts and cultural industries. Increase public participation and workforce training. Expand education and employment opportunities. And increase the ability of nonprofit organizations and business, businesses. The group seeking the funds include representatives of the East Gate Regional Council of Governments, Valley Partners, Western Reserve Port Authority, Youngstown Foundation, and the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. And to transfer monies in the amount of $500,000 from fund number 949-130-1100-11001-50710. Fund number 0010009999991413000. And increase appropriations in fund number 0011201001001505826. Buy the $500,000 to be used for Valley Vision 2050 allocation and to appropriate accordingly. Payment will be made to the Western Reserve Port Authority. Is there anybody here to represent that would like to speak? Yes. Could you please give your name?
My name is Sarah Lau, I'm with the Western Reserve Port Authority. And I will speak for 10 seconds if you'll give permission for me to invite the partners up because they're doing all the work. We're just paying the bills on behalf of the Trumbull County Commissioners. Good morning, good morning, good morning, thank you for listening and thank you for.
Come on over to the side, Sarah, so we can catch you on camera.
Which side, oh, the camera side, all right, thank you, everybody. Again, I'm with the Western Reserve Port Authority. We have been working with these economic development partners for several years. Teeing ourselves up for 21st century economic needs in the valley. And what we have before you today is the second half of the funding that we are requesting. Now, this is a program where everything from soup to nuts is getting covered. That is, East Gate is doing all the planning, the infrastructure things to improve quality of life. The Regional Chamber is working on talent development. And they are also through the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, building our arts and culture ecosystem, which is a big part of everything. And we have Lake To River, which is bringing in the, the big companies. Attraction and retention of the existing large employers, the ones that really are the machines that keep the economy going. And we have small business development, yes, with Valley Partners. So I'd like to ask each of them to come up, they're prepared to give you that 60-second elevator speech to talk just a sec about what they do, okay? And I'm going to ask Mike McGiffen to start, right?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. My assurance, thank you. I want to start by saying that. Trumbull County. The Lake To River region, Mahoney Valley, Ohio. Is positioned now better for economic growth than it has been in the last 50 years. Your initial investment in Valley Vision. Helped the Lake To River Economic Development Organization get started. Helped us convince Governor Delain and Jobs Ohio to create a separated Lake To River Economic Development Region. So that our four counties of Ashuville, Trumbull, Mahoney, Columbia can work in partnership to secure an identity in the future of economic growth. For this region. Specifically in Trumbull County, we have 44 properties that we're actively advertising, looking to attract industrial end users to. We have five current projects that we're working on just in Trumbull County alone. Those five projects total $350 million in capital investment. And if we land all five of those projects, we'll see 330 new jobs in Trumbull County. Those numbers balloon past tho, those totals, if you get to the broader picture and look at the four counties in total. Looking at about 850 million in capital investment, or, I'm sorry, 770 million capital investment. 850 new jobs across the four counties. Currently have about 14 projects that are piped pipe that we're working on for all of the counties. Just in Trumbull alone, in the last seven months since this organization has been in existence. Five projects, $350 million in capital investment, 330 new jobs. I like that, three, three, two, right? Shemalot here, I'll leave this with you, this is 12 copies of basically what I presented today. Thank you for the time, Sarah.
Mr. Bernard, I have a question, how close are those projects? At what stage, what stage are they in?
That's a great question. One of them will hear very soon, very, very soon in Trumbull County. The next one that we're going to do, where I think we've got about two months left on. And that's a big one, that everybody's going to be very pleased to hear finally what we're, what we're going to be up on now. And then the other three, I think are going to be a little bit longer. The average lifespan of an economic development project, it's about 18 months right now. We're looking at somewhere between 350 to 500 days.
So we can see progress very soon, we're going to see, we're going to get two answers very, very soon.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you, very much.
Good morning, thank you for having us this morning, I'm Brenda Leonard, I'm the Director of Community Impact with the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. These Valley Vision funds have been instrumental in helping us to move our efforts forward. And also in our partnership with the economic development agencies that you're going to be hearing from this morning. The Chamber specifically has been working on talent expansion, housing market development, and other efforts, including protection of local suppliers, vendors, DEIA, and others. Specifically, I'd just like to talk a little bit about talent expansion. Because we know that this is an issue that has been arising with many, many of our members. They're having a really hard time finding workers, and so we are focusing heavily on that effort. Where we have partnered with Goodwill Industries and, you guys probably have heard about, the Community Needs Assessment that we conducted over the summer. And now we are working on trying to raise the workforce participation rate. We know that in our valley, the workforce participation rate is about 57%. Statewide and nationwide, that number is about 63%. So we are lacking quite a few people that we believe could be in the workforce but aren't. And that's largely because of barriers that exist. And Goodwill Industries and the Chamber are now partnering to try to overcome some of those barriers. We're going to be creating calls to action and trying to develop efforts to overcome those barriers. And get these people off the sidelines and into the workforce. That's just one effort, there are many, many things that we are doing, but I just wanted to touch briefly on that.
Hi, everyone, I'm Joanne Stomp, I'm the Executive Director of Leadership in the Valley and the Center for Nonprofit Excellence in the Regional Chamber. And the areas that we have been working on, and thank you for your initial support of this Valley Vision initiative to get us up and running and off the ground. But we're working on increasing public awareness of the arts and culture industry, that quality of life initiative that is so important to business attraction in our community. And also to increase the sustainability and growth of nonprofit organizations that helps so many people in the community in social services, mental health, drug abuse. Things like that to make our community more attractive to, to individuals that are coming in. So areas that we've been working on are a lot of research and planning during the initial year and contacting other communities that are doing initiatives such as this to look at best practices. We've provided, purpose of the Center for Nonprofit Excellence is to provide training, resources, and individualized consulting services. So we are making grant software available, you know, we have wonderful foundations in our local community. But we want to be able to try and bring more state and federal dollars here to help people. So we've been working on providing software to nonprofit organizations, a razor's edge database management that will help to identify major gift prospects, so that we're expanding the capacity of our local nonprofit organizations. And then also candid pro software. We've also been working with individual organizations on consulting services to help them to do a better job and increase their sustainability. And have great helped them to raise over close to $8 million so far. And we're also targeting now six organizations in Trumbull County to provide these consulting services. And we'll be able to benchmark what they, where they're at now and where they'll be at a year from now and helping to helping to help people that they serve. From an arts and culture standpoint, quality of life is so important. And the biggest issues that we've heard from people in the community is what's going on. There is so much going on in our communities, and sometimes we're our own worst enemy as far as not knowing what's going on. So it's tried to have an open years, but a one shared calendar where these businesses that we're trying to attract to come in can go in and look and see everything that's available in, in Mahoney and Trumbull Counties. So we will be working with a working group of partners. Made up of nonprofits, like you mentioned, business heroes in both counties. To try to make sure that we got, we're pulling together all of the resources to show all of the great things that we have to do that, that increases the quality of life for all of us in Valley. So those are just some of the things that we've started on, and we thank you again for your support and look forward to continuing this and to year two of the plan.
Thank you.
Morning, I'm Jim Kinnick, I'm the Executive Director of East Gate Regional Council of Governments. We're the planning organization for Mooney and Trumbull Counties, and appreciate the opportunity to speak today for a couple of minutes. I've been doing this a long time, 30 years at the state level, this is my 10th year at East Gate. Never before have I seen the opportunity to see funds sold. Two things I do want to call out to partnerships we have now regionally with East Gate, with the Chamber, with the Port Authority, Landbanks, the Commissioners is. It's the first time I've seen it, the cooperation, everybody sharing a vision that was for. The second opportunity I just have to call out is that Lake To River opportunity. You know, almost 40 years in this business, the ability to be able to attract jobs Ohio dollars. This area is being the, one of the seven entities under Jobs Ohio is insane. And we will benefit from that, with the good work they're going to do and the ability to track the dollars. So I applaud the effort of everybody to help make that work and get that across and finish it. But from an East Gate standpoint, we go into housing, we recognize that employers and people around here said we have, it's nothing new. We don't have enough houses, we need to fix houses, we need to infill areas in the cities. And we need to be able to attract, to attract the talent and track the employers who need to get housing. We did a study, assessed all the housing that we have available and opportunities to provide more in both Mahoney and Trumbull Counties. Then we had a, through a consultant, and then we had the consultant develop the strategy. We're rolling that strategy out next Thursday, January 16 at 9:30 at the Public Library in Youngstown. It'll be live then on our website, and it's going to be able to sort of interact with hotspots for building, hotspots for infills. A strategy to move us forward, but the main strategy focuses on four buckets underneath housing. One is land assembly, second is developing small, or small developer training, so we get more developers building more houses. The third is zoning and permitting, so that we can get communities working together, find out what works and what doesn't, and maybe kind of get everybody on the same page, so we're user friendly to builders. And the last is going to focus on tax abatements, incentives, and infrastructure investment. We had that up and going and were ready to roll that out, but with the commitment from Valley Vision and Commissioners in both counties, we were able to extend that and reach out into employers to find out exactly what their employees need to come to this area. So it'll build, give us the ability to extend the good work we did and take it a little bit farther, so that we're, you're really user friendly and ready to go when employers are looking in. Anybody can tell you, Mike, it's supported from Lake To River, employers want to know about housing when they come here. They, they, they could find land anywhere, they want to know housing, they want to know schools. So I think this is a full circle, what we're trying to do. The second thing that we've been able to use and extend our services at East Gate was to look at parks. I certainly realize how important quality of life is to continue to attract people to our area. We brought a consultant on board that's going to help us move forward with our parks. First, we did background work, we looked at 194 different parks in Mahoney and Trumbull Counties, 74 in Trumbull County. Did an assessment of what they have, what they need, how can we bring them back, and now we're going to have a consultant on board. Sort of get those ready at some type of preliminary engineering stage. And then some type of effort to find funding and prioritize what's, where's our best investment. But Joanne hit on it, when you talk about trying to attract people and to get talent here, you got to have quality life in your park. So we appreciate the opportunity, appreciate the commitment from the Commissioners. If anybody has any questions, I will gladly answer, but I encourage everybody to attend, it's on our website. Our housing assessment and strategy to roll out next Thursday at the library in Youngstown at 9:30. Thank you.
Jim, great work.
Everybody, I'm Teresa Miller, I'm the Executive Director at Valley Partners. For those of you that don't know what we do, we do small business lending, so if there's a larger project that a financial institution doesn't want to fund 100%, they'll come to us and we'll do a portion of the loan. Or if there's someone who can't get traditional financing, whether it's due to a ding on their credit report due to health issues during the pandemic or something like that. Then we can still take a character a little more into account than the banks can, so we can still lend to them. As a part of another project we were doing, we included Valley Vision, we created a grant program to help start our businesses. So if someone is looking to start a business, they either kind of have a business plan, or they don't even know where to start. We offer a six-week course where they learn things such as marketing, financial analysis, tax returns, cash flow. And then all these items that go into a business plan. So over the six-week course, we helped them complete an entire business plan, so at the end of the program they have a business plan in place and they're ready to go get financing or capital from wherever it may be. So then they get a grant for $8,000, and we pay it directly to their accountant or their attorney. So that we know they're building a good foundation from the start. The attorney is going to help them set up the right documents, the accountant's going to help them set up the right documents. So Valley Vision, as a part of that, Trumbull County, we, I got a company in there. So for 2024, we provided, we met with 248 new clients, so our small, we have three business counselors. And they met either one-on-one, or we also host classes beyond that grant class. We have held luncheon, webinars, began the same kind of topics. So we held nine of those in 2024. We helped create 100 business plans to these new clients, and we completed 508 counseling hours. The capital that these clients were able to obtain was over $3 million. And as a part of the accounting and legal grant program, we had 99 graduates, over four cohorts that we had hosted. 66 grants were funded in 2024 for a total of $640,000. And the great part about the Trumbull County funds and the Valley Vision funds as a whole is we were able to utilize those to leverage additional dollars. So in just Trumbull County, we used $6,000 of this funding to leverage an additional 125,000 to cover our administrative costs to maintain the program. And then we used $70,000 of the Trumbull County Valley Vision to leverage 576,000 to make it a total, a larger program we're able to grant to more graduates. So at the end of, actually the beginning of this year, we're going to start sending out a letter to each of our graduates to see how things are going, so that we'll have an update to see whether the class was going to help or not. But it's a very exciting program, we're spread fast about it, very thankful that you guys.
Anyone else? Well, I just got to say on behalf of the Commissioners, I think they deserve a round of applause, because this is a, this is a great group. The professionalism and what we have here that's going to benefit our residents, and we do have, we do have much road to look forward to. And, you know, to commend the former Commissioners for being involved, they did free up 500,000 and then wanted to see how this program was working, and I think it's working beautifully. Probably better than what we thought was going to work. Danny, you could probably speak better about the additional 500, it's already been appropriated.
When we appropriated this, Mahoney County gave a million, they asked us for a million. It was a new, untested product, and with using taxpayer dollars, I felt it was best at the time to make a modification of our, of our journal entry and said, let's, let's appropriate 500,000 now, reevaluate it in six months, see how the progress is, and then do it. While the six months went by and we didn't reevaluate the elections or other things, they came up with that. And they were still getting their legs underneath them, I think at that time also with Lake To River had plopped up. After we appropriated the money for Valley Vision 2050, they got up to speed really quick. It really was a nice little shot in the arm for the Valley by having that new Lake To River zone. And so it's kind of put off to the side now. We could have wrote the other 500,000 last year, we started talking about this after you were elected, but before you were inaugurated. And I felt it was best bringing back it again to actually have a public performance review, and that's why we had them speak here today. To see that they've exceeded the expectations of what I believe the last board wanted to see out of them to appropriate the other half of the money. And so of course I firmly support giving the other half of the money now and continuing to work into the future with all those groups. I've said before, we got the brightest minds in the Mahoney Valley right here. And, and Tony made a comment, it's been stuck in my head for three weeks now, since we, since we met. All we got to be is smart enough to say yes, is what Tony said. And in this situation, I'm no dummy, I'm saying yes, and I feel like we will push this through and in the future. Following their lead, not reinventing the wheel between them, Julie and Nick, who are our economic team, as we voted yesterday at the reorganization meeting. We just got to be smart enough to say yes, follow their lead, you know, we're, we're, I don't think any of us here is going to claim to be any better of a financial person than any of those people that spoke up here today, so that's where I stand.
I agree, we'll move ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation and I know it's, it took a lot of your time to be here today and you're welcome to stay and join us for pizza afterward, we're about halfway through, we will be halfway through this pretty quick. Or you can go work to start raising this more money. Tony, there was one thing I wanted to bring up too, you had brought up that question earlier about grant writing and we've talked about it with previous boards. I did have a meeting with Guy Covio from the Chamber and he, he believes with this group, we may be able, they may be able to provide us a grant writer that we may be able to cost share, maybe even give them some office space. But the community, whether it be the Chamber, the Valley Vision, the Lake to River somehow, that they would like to be involved in that process somehow, they have grant writers in all those organizations. And we may not have to hire a position of just a grant writer, we may be able to partner up with them and have one assigned to us that does half their time on public, public authority grants, something that will work with townships, the Commissioners and anyone else that's a public entity as part of what they're doing with that too. So that's something I'd like to explore into the future too and it may solve the, the need we have for bringing in more grant money.
Saves us money and it gets your job done.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay, okay, thank you Commissioner.
Chairman.
We'll move on, agenda item number five, to authorize President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute four letters of support for the remediation abatement grant application for the Trumbull County Land Reutilization Corporation. Applications former Trumbull family, former U S Steel, former Loma Theater, the former Delphi Administration Building, potentially eliminate environmental hazards posed by these contaminated sites and corresponding risk to our community, allowing infill development with existing infrastructure to spur development and job creation. Number six, to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Rick Hernandez, President of the Board for, I think I did that one from you Lisa. See why? I missed that. Calendar here. I'm still learning this process. For the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five, we're noted to review approved and sign the Ohio Department of Development Security role assignment forms for various grant programs administered through the Office of Community Development. Ohio Department of Development's Office of Community Development implemented on an online grants management system ocean to be grantees for the programs administered by this office. President of the Board of the Trumbull County Commissioners is required to execute the submitted forms. Number seven, to approve and sign submitted authorization signature card form calendar year two thousand and twenty-five, allowing named individuals listed below, sign and submit a request for payment status funds for C D, C D B G programs that implemented through the Trumbull County Planning Commission and authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the attached authorized signature card for Trumbull County, Ohio and the submitted signature certification form which must be notarized, certifying a signature of the President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in two thousand and twenty-five. And that would consist of Commissioner Bernard, myself, Commissioner Malloy, Julie Green, Nicholas Coggins and Emily Moran. Number eight, authorize the publication of notice of intent to request release of funds in the Tribune Chronicle on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, required for the tiered environmental review record. Trumbull County Planning Commission's Office has compiled an environmental review record for this project. Youngstown Neighborhood Development Corporation's older adult home modification program requires a categorical exclusion subject to fifty-eight point five level of environmental review and clearance. Advertisement will be submitted and paid where by the Youngstown Neighborhood Development Corporation and authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute the attached seven zero one five point one five request of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute the attached. I read right through that, for the really release of funds and certification program. Number nine, authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute, execute any and all required documents related to the grant application process, receipt and return of related documents, execution of grant documents, implementation of activities and expenditures of funds related to the administration of all ongoing or open grant programs carried over from the previous years. This action per the recommendation of the Trumbull County Planning Commission. The ongoing, ongoing open grants include fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two C D B G residential public infrastructure grant program, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two C D B G critical.
Can you read these?
Do I need to read all these? I mean, there's two pages worth there.
Julie, you have any input on that? Anything pertinent we need to know about these outside of what's here?
No, you don't want to read through them?
Yeah, you have questions, I'll answer them. It's just, I think it's so explanatory and shows what a stat seven is doing. And this is just part of our work program. But you have questions, you have a comment. Probably want to eat a pizza.
Okay, thank you Julie. Ten, to authorize you award contract to the lowest response for responsible bidder, Straight Line Interiors of Hubbard, Ohio, write a letter of materials for Trumbull County Planning Commission, ceiling renovation on one eighty-five East Market. You warrant second floor suite A for technical specifications proposal submitted before the deadline of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. The project is to be paid for out of the ARPA fund number zero seven seven zero one 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 thousand, one thousand, one, five oh five, three oh three. Board of Trumbull County Commissioners authorize a planning commission on eleven, two thousand and twenty-four through an M O U to provide, to move forward with the ARPA, ARPA A T C P C building repair project, projects J V one five, pages two, six, nine. Okay, so this goes to Straight Line Interiors, I guess they were the lowest bid, Julie Green?
Yes, thank you. I did want to mention Jimmy's here, Jimmy, stand up. Thank you Jimmy, he helped us to identify local qualified people to send RFPs to. So we didn't want to recognize him, but this is low bid and we had already awarded a contract for, the Commissioners had already awarded a contract for ARPA replacement and this needs to go before that, so we're waiting for that to.
The roof's all done, so there's no more leaking, so now we can do the interior? And then still with that, as you, gentlemen, may or may not know, we had a leak in the ceiling, caused a flood in an office, Nick Coggins basically had, we're going, was flippers to work for a while. They took care of the drying as best they can, but of course that got in the carpet, got in our rotting of ceilings. So we appropriated last board new carpeting. Now this will be for the ceilings to be done, but it's not done yet, there's still some interior modifications we need to make. There's a stairway there that leads to an old doorway that's gone, now it's just a stairway to a wall and stairway to nowhere. So we've got to do something with that. Julie had some other modifications in there as far as, well, the outside of the building too, as you saw what happened across the street. The facade of the building is falling onto the street. We've got some problems with the eaves on our building there also that could potentially be the same problem, which could be a safety hazard for the public, so that's something that down the road, as the interior is fixed, we're going to need to look at the outside of that building and Mike Solinsky and Bill Hart have been kind of on that, monitoring it and keeping an eye to make sure that, at least for right now, it's as safe as it can be until we get to the funding for that on the outside. And it is historical, so again, just go up there and place some cement plaster or whatever, it's got to, got to kind of be done to look at the building. So that's long-term down the road on the wish list type of thing.
Commissioner, from the building trade, you're okay with this contract?
Yeah, so Julie actually reached out to me, she said, hey, she goes, I got this small project, we got a couple of names. I sent her some names, she did all the work, I just dumped out, opened up doors.
And that's Jimmy Taylor, she's talking about with the West Reserve Building Trades, just for the record. Thank you Jimmy.
Commissioners, just a note to, Vanessa Construction came in at twenty-one, two. Valley Acoustics, no bid and Murphy Contracting, no response or Bish. Move on to eleven, the approved agreement, the legal services by and between the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office and Howland Township Board of Trustees. Authorizing the Prosecutor's Office to serve as Law Director for Howland Township for the term of January one twenty-five through December thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. Prosecutor's Office shall be paid the sum of forty-two thousand dollars annually for said services payable by the Howland Township Board of Trustees at thirty-five hundred dollars per month. Twelve, to receive. Yes.
Oh, I, I was just moving over in case there was a question, that's all. If you don't have any questions, I don't have to talk, it's okay.
This, this is something also, gentlemen, I mean, there's some things that just carry over to the board. Prosecutor's Office does represent us and all the townships in the county, for most, for all of them, right? But, almost, but there's, there's some special circumstances where they also serve as law director, not just legal counsel. So we have the contract with Howland. Rather than, so is it just Howland, it's this unique situation?
Just Howland, as far as townships go, and yeah, just, just a brief point, Commissioner Malloy is correct. By statute, our office represents not only the county officials and boards, but also township officials and courts. Except for home rule townships, we've got two of those, Liberty and Howland. And then you have one that's a village township, so that's off the table. But Howland does contract, traditionally is contracted with our office to provide legal services which they're permitted to do under the revised code. That will just be, this would be a renewal of that existing range you have with Howland Township. We do not have one with Liberty, Liberty has their own.
Then we do what we call affix occasionally, where we're dealing with the township over an issue and our prosecutor has to hands off, recuse himself and then we have to get our own attorney, the township has to get their own attorney when it comes to that. Very rarely, we have to, fortunately, but it does happen occasionally. And the cities, of course, have their own, thanks to Moore, has their own law director, Niles, Gerard, I believe. So cities, we don't represent any of the, just the townships.
Thank you Commissioner. Number twelve, to receive and place on file October and November twenty-four monthly financial report for Trumbull County Tourism Bureau submitted by Beth Carmichael, the Executive Director. Thirteen, to approve personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Garrett Brady from the position of custodian, which is pay range three, one year, fourteen dollars, eighty-three cents per hour to the position of lab technician, pay range four, one year, sixteen dollars, five cents hour with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five pursuant to the authorized job posting of December four to December twelve, two thousand and twenty-four. Gary, I don't know.
Marion or Oliver, he just wanted to handle personal matters more, so he has thirteen and fourteen.
No, I.
Just so we, now with that opens up a position for us to make, that's again, another custodian position?
This one is custodian.
So, okay, so you guys will have custodian within Austin.
Alls we do is fill one job and then replace another, so yeah, this is just day-to-day H R.
And it's a great opportunity.
It is.
He has a desire to become a wastewater operator, so moving up from custodian to lab tech within eighteen months of lab tech, he was asking for a lab license, wastewater license, we need that. So hoping he goes around and get an A P O, operator license, so he can venture. It's a fantastic.
This was something again, Commissioners, that we had talked about recently over the last year, is creating a ladder in every department so that someone starts at the bottom, they can always work their way up and always have hope to be the boss by the end of their career. And we found there's some departments where we have gaps where we may, they may get to a three or a four and the next level position is to jump to like an eight or a nine and there's nowhere in the middle for them to go unless they transfer to a different department and work their way up. So one of my personal goals and is to create ladders in every department, so if someone wants to make a career worthy for Trumbull County, if they want to go get the advanced education, they want to go get the certificates, if they want to better themselves and if they want that higher paying job, there's a ladder for them to climb to eventually be the boss without having to leave Trumbull County and then come back later at a different level. And this, this is a good example of it here too, you had a guy that started at the bottom, now he worked his way up the ring and there's ladders above that if he wants to get other certifications and other certificates and training that he may be able to work up and, you know, be a department head someday.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Okay, we'll move on to fourteen, to approve personnel action for the employment, Mr. Stanley Bell from the position of Director of Government Affairs in Special Projects, twenty-four dollars, ninety-one cents. Is that his current pay, Lisa? Okay, with the County Engineers Department to the position of sewer line maintenance crew assistant, pay range six. Seven years, that is seven years service, okay. In the amount of twenty-one dollars, fifty-one cents with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Thursday, January nine, two thousand and twenty-five pursuant to the authorized job posting of December nine to December seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four.
This is, I think, here again, so this was an internal post, please give your name again, just everybody. Bob Meyer, N O, Territory Engineers. So we had one union applicant, one born on the grid, the person decided not to draw it, it's an empty. But then we had one inter-county employee, that's Mr. Stan Bell, who worked for the Highway Engineers, so he applied January twenty, and he has required C E L, which is what we struggled to get. And he was in the management world, was in the former engineer and he was accepting a lesser role with us. Look, he was going to be a great student and had to wait, had to wait till they were sorted through, which could bring him more responsibility.
So he was, he was an at-will employee with the engineer, so he just jumped over to get a different job from government affairs to this?
Yes.
Thank you Bob. Fifteen, to approve the two thousand and twenty-four annual county highway system mileage certification as reported by the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation in accordance with provisions specified in the revised code, section four, five, zero, one point zero four. Distribution of revenue, the verified mileage is December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-four, it's four, five, six point six nine, six miles. Sixteen, to concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant special hauling permit to haul steel coils on Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed, the necessary permit fee has been submitted and approved. Approval is subject to conditions listed on the permit, that's Gerald of Transportations Inc. We got a few for Dave, I don't know, he might want to vibrate after you go through all these, David. To concur with Trumbull County Engineer, David D. Cristofaro to grant special hauling permit to move overweight equipment over Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed. The necessary permit fee on and insurance have been submitted and approval subject to the conditions listed on the permit at Southern Pines Trucking, Inc. Eighteen, to concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant special end of supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles to transport aggregate concrete, construction goods or other like materials not to exceed eighty thousand pound gross vehicle weight to sites located upon loaded posts in Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed. Necessary insurance information has been submitted and approval subject to conditions listed on the permit as T and J Hershey Trucking out of Dundee, Ohio. To concur at nineteen, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. Necessary permit fee has been submitted and approval subject to the conditions listed on the permit, Enbridge Gas, Eastern Natural Gas, Lengis Paving. To concur with the Trumbull County Engineer, grant quarterly operator fee permit, fleet permit to travel on load posts in Trumbull County roadways not to exceed eighty thousand pounds gross vehicle weight requested by the company listed. Necessary permit fees, insurance information is submitted and subject conditions listed on the permit. Daniel Grindrich.
Please, have you checked the spelling on that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think there's an R in there, but I should have checked that.
Grindrich. Twenty-one, to concur. Twenty one, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer permitting city of Portland. To store its back truck inside the county engineer's facility located in three, six, five, four Warrenby Hill Road, Portland. Ohio beginning November two, two, oh, two, four through April twenty twenty five and November twenty twenty five through April twenty six. Uh, back truck storage agreement.
Mike Slinski and Bill Hart, what's the status of the engineer's garage with the roof?
Commissioners, the garage portion has been watertight since Thanksgiving. There's some incidentals coping. Whatnot on the garage area that aren't going to affect the storage of the back truck.
So these does these trucks are in that building?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, they've been used.
Commissioners, Bill Hart, it's ninety five percent done, it's the office end that they're still working on with the weather now, so. Yeah, it's all needs coping and but not, but it's watertight.
Gentlemen, we had a roof leak there where the roof had collapsed and started to collapse. Was caught, they pulled their things out, it was like a two year process with this bid, there was all kind of. Bid issues and things like that, so this was something that was a learning lesson that we never want to go through again, was it designed build on a. On a garage, so but now it's good to hear that it's up and running for this one.
And I don't have a problem with that, but my question is if there were, uh, if they have a fire or rough wood cave in. Cause damage to the truck, would the county be held liable for that or? Is that in this agreement?
So the roof was in such bad repair, you couldn't even walk on it.
If you just give your name.
Sure, Mike Slinski, Trumbull County Building. So we removed the entire deck of the roof, straight down to the bar doors. New deck, new ISO, new, new, new poly for the roofs, we've got an entire new roof structure. On there, I mean, it we it it was, so it's completely new system.
Like, I guess when you.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just.
Portland parts are trucking there, or it's Portland's insurance covering it, or is it ours?
That's the liability on that, I I don't know that.
Nobody ever, I'm not going to sit here, I mean, I don't, I don't have an answer for you because this was never even brought to my attention, so. I do think, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush, Human Resources Department. Um, I I too have to concur with what, um, Commissioner Bernard just asked. Uh, I was, again, um, of course, I I just think that God forbid something were to happen, that is a very good point. We're storing somebody else's material in our county owned garage that is covered by Corso. But to that point, do we, we should entrance to some sort of everything in our MOU? I don't know, Bill, if something happens to this truck while it's on our property, we're taking on that liability. So I don't know if anybody talks about that, but this is the first I'm hearing.
Yeah, this would be like a landlord leasing agreement somehow, that if our building burns down, we we're going to accept responsibility somehow, unless we. Have them wave that through a memorandum, so that's a good question.
It was a very good question.
And that's a lesson learned for others.
And maybe, uh, engineer.
Yeah, I've I've got David Cristofaro, Trumbull County Engineer, now this is the first I've seen of this, and I, it seemed to me like it has been ongoing. They had a lease last year and possibly the year before it. Has anybody seen a lease agreement in the last years? Okay, so I think it may be something that you want to look at before you approve it. And and make sure that your conditions or your concerns are addressed.
Right, and I was asking David because, um, this is before he came in, and it poses a good question.
Absolutely.
We always got to look at insurance liability, um, we would like to help others out, but you know.
Mister Prosecutor, do you know, do we have that something was run by you on a lease as far as this, or something we bring up in Portland? Or is it something just on between the old engineer?
Bill Danso from Prosecutor's Office, I don't recall if this is something that came through our office. If this is a longstanding one, it could have even come through years ago for review. It's possible it didn't come through at all, I I don't recall, I can have, I'd have to check my files with the engineer's office stuff to see. Done fast, uh, that being said, if there's a new one that that anybody wants review of, we can certainly do that, that's not.
We do that, David?
Yeah, and then I I have a second question, I mean, the building is not owned by the county engineer, it's owned by the commissioner. So the lease agreement would have to be signed by the commissioner, it's not the county engineer. And so I can't imagine that the county engineer would have the authority to, without commission approval, sign a lease agreement. Anyway, just storing it, I accept it real quick. Is that people in here now?
I just came through at the end of the year, the city of Portland wanted to formalize it, it's been a verbal agreement for years, I believe. Storing equipment here, so it's been done on an annual basis, going all the way back from Bonn, Whitman. The service director, so new mayor, service director, wanted to get it formalized. Agreement came through, it was basically executed by the time I got it on the agenda, I think I shared it with Jason, I'm not positive. But when I get back to the office, I'm going to send it to all the commissioners. So I'll get it to you guys, the agreement, and this was for concurrence, obviously, it's it's not a a complete agreement until you guys concur with it. Equipment is in there already, correct?
And then Commissioners, Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush, once you get the equipment, because it does look like there's some sort of back truck storage. Can you please share that with HR so we can make sure?
I'll just see, see, yeah, Alex, I'll get that to you, and I think there's a hold harmless clause in there, you said it came through at the end of the year, it was already, uh. All executed by the time I hit my desk, I just wanted to get it on the agenda for concurrence.
Of course, we want to work with cities and townships if we can, with the whole harmless thing, if that's in there, that's all we were going to need, just protect us.
And that Corso knows too.
Are we going to hold this or is this going to go on?
Um. Till next week.
You know, we shouldn't pass it through until we see this contract, and if we do get a contract today, we could vote on tomorrow, if not, then this is something. Then, well, let's leave it on. But and if if tomorrow we don't have the paperwork that shows there's an agreement or a hold harmless clause, then we can table it till the next, till we can uh, get that done.
Okay, I'll get it to you guys immediately as soon as I get back.
I need that.
And meanwhile, they could, Trumbull County, meanwhile, they have a building, or uh, piece of equipment in the building.
Correct.
You're going to want to allow them to continue with keeping that there until you sign.
I I guess we're one night, we we don't need to call them and make them put out there in the snow overnight.
I agree, but I think that's going to be part of your consideration.
Understand, but we don't have an agreement yet, so if they have it in there, it's kind of on them a little bit, right, so I would think without permission.
Well, or you too, because now it's not us, now you know. You do notice right here.
Well, which prosecutor advises to do?
That was prosecutor advised us to do.
Well, again, Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, you know, without knowing, and this may have been reviewed, like you said, I'm not sure. Uh, the bottom line is, is there some liability, if there is, it's ultimately up to the commissioners whether they want to. You know, accept the potential liability on having that vehicle there or not at the meantime. But again, that, assuming this has already been reviewed, if it has already been reviewed, I should say, that that may not be an issue again, I I don't know off the top. Without checking downstairs to find out. Uh, the only thing I would say too is that as far as hold harmless goes, generally, public subdivisions can't identify. Another party, so the liability is generally addressed, or in the sense of having that agreement of of what. And who is responsible for what particular insurances and acts, so again, we'll we'll look into all that for commissioners, that's no problem at all. Uh, but it's it's hard for me to say right now. Without checking, but what I would say is if there is no approved agreement in place, if that hasn't been reviewed. Then is there a risk of some liability as far as damage? There is, um, though that's something that ultimately, unfortunately, if something were to happen, our insurance companies, the counties and. City of Portland would would have to hammer out, I'm sure. Uh, but whether the commissioners are wanting to tolerate that for a brief period of time until it gets sorted out is really a problem that you guys would make.
I I, it's there, they've done it before in the past, I say, let's let's speed this process up, see what we can do. Overnight, see what we have in agreement now, but to call the city and say, you know, that just doesn't, that's not a good neighbor to me, I think.
Gary, you want to include the prosecutor?
Yeah, so if you can check on it, uh, when we get back to the office, say, Gary, and forward it over, then see if we can hammer something. But eat, raw slice, there you go.
Okay, uh, twenty two, to reappoint Mr. Morrow D V S D as member of the Trumbull County Board. For Developmental Disabilities, or an additional four year term commencing January one, twenty twenty five, ending December thirty one, twenty twenty eight. Uh, Mr. D V S D Declaration Eligibility Form will be reported onto the Journal for Record Certainties.
Like, we just did this one last month, didn't we? We just appointed the same one, because I remember Commissioner General Lacy abstaining.
Right?
Yeah. I remember voting on it, because I remember him abstaining and then talking about it. If there's a way we can look into this, it was last month, it was within the last two months, I should say, but I want to say it was beginning of December. There were three, two or three appointments, and he was one.
There were two reappointments, sorry.
Yes.
Edward Starr, Superintendent of Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities, uh, we had two reappointments, spent one, uh, vacant position. Uh, that's the next agenda item, uh, I, we did get a journal entry, one, I think, you might have gotten a journal.
I think we did, because I remember, because Mr. Dale may abstain.
Okay, so then, we don't, this will change.
We'll see, if if we already did that, we'll just scrap that. While you're up.
Yeah, so the, uh, item number, uh, twenty three, uh, commitment of. Miss Melissa Baker, for the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities, uh, by new statute, uh, person with a disability has to get. In by July one, twenty twenty five, to the, uh, Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities by commissioners. Or by the probate judge, uh, Melissa very excited, uh, to serve, she'll make a great board member. We're excited to have her, she did, uh, later declaration form, she's ready. And then, uh, commissioners, if you would, mine, I want to invite you to our January, provided that these passed tomorrow, or these resolutions are. Voted for tomorrow, I'd like to invite you to our board meeting on the twenty seventh to swear in. Um, there'll be three commissioner appointments, uh. Be joining our board on the twenty seventh, like to have you all there to swear them in, recognize, uh, their service.
Okay, thank you.
Man, I gotta tell you, gentlemen, I I've been to his office and toured the facility, they have there, the employees there. Unbelievably impressed with the professionalism, I mean, it was like a beehive of workers that are working for the community. Everyone in there had a smile, everyone there, when you talk to them. For to the person, um, was just beaming when they talked about what they did for a living. I mean, it's somewhere they had their heart involved in it, not, it was just a job to them, it was a calling, okay, something that. They just loved their job, they love working for him, they love working for that department, they love working for the people they serve there, and I have an encourage. Both you, when you make your rounds, stop in there someday and see it, you'll, I I walked there and I was very, very proud of the service that that, uh. Supported Developmental Disabilities, they provided the community.
Thank you, Commissioner, yes, and I would invite you to, uh, come to our school while we're in session and see our services that we provide there, and our transportation services. Welcome anytime.
Bring tissue when you go, there's a bit here stressing before you leave, uh, about tears of pride and. That you have for these people.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, moving on to. Twenty four, for the approval of the promotion of Mr. Larry Infant. As Maintenance Supervisor, he's a non bargaining employee with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, effective. February one, twenty twenty five, the transfer will be paid twenty six dollars fifty nine cent per hour with full county benefits. And he requires a probationary period of, uh, nine months. Yes, John Gargano, Director of Job and Family Services. My present supervisor is retiring this month, so we posted his job position, and as. Commissioner Roy has said, we have sort of a. A ladder for those people to be promoted and to stay there. Mr. Infant did start in the maintenance department, he, uh, promoted into a casework position. And he's in the fiscal department right now, he also, uh, the job description, uh, he's a certification. Dealing with super, uh, maintenance supervision, he went and got that on its own. Um, we had posting, it was testing and interviewing Mr. Infant. Questions? Moving on to twenty five, to adopt the resolution declaring the necessity of constructing a state line road sanitary sewer improvement project. That's project number one S nineteen for Trumbull County, fine sanitary sewer district in Brookfield. A, uh, meeting, well, February fifth. Uh, twenty twenty five, seven P M, it's hereby fixed at the time, Brookfield Township Administration building. Um. As the place for hearing objections or acceptance of project one S nineteen to the tentative capital charges. Or to the boundaries of the project scope for the same as outlined in the resolution. Gary?
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, Commissioner, this is just another, uh, public caring for an upcoming summer project. Uh, you've allocated A R P funds to help, uh, lower the cost for the benefit of property owners on this project. Uh, as you know, uh, we just had Smith Sewer Road Public Caring Schedule. Just before, uh, the Christmas break, the state line is the next line, then we're going to have Sheridan Drive. Then we're going to have that water extension on Anderson First Road, so we got four, uh, public areas we need to get for these small projects in. Uh, probably to be, uh. Uh, the end of March, so they're going to be busy with these, and, um. Those A R P allocations, all those projects are moving forward. Uh, right now, we're wrapping up Hill Road Water Project, wrapping up the Yankee Lake Project. Uh, we got the notice system proceeds out for that state river water regionalization project. Got the big metal project, uh, I'm going to talk to Percy now and see where we are as far as executing those contracts. Hillville Drive is an active project right now. Move on to, um, the water line, is that a petition? Uh. Oh, yes, Commissioner, that's, um. I I I need to get, uh, design engineer on board to get that. With that, and we just got in the R F U for the. Uh, engineering, one or two projects, five. So, yes, I'll I'll put out an R F U for that, right now, we're super headed, moving to a burner, be able to, uh, these projects and help. Would like to, uh, be able to, until we get more engineers. Got any answers later on, Dave?
I got some good ones.
It's not like you're still, it sounds like you're taking all the good ones.
All those projects that you just listed, um, you put that on paper before, so. Make sure, and to myself, so we will know what projects they are and what the status.
Yeah, Commissioners, I do have spreadsheets that I don't have with me, but I did keep all, track all that on spreadsheet, and I'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gary, you surprised me. Why's that?
Usually your big stuff is stuck around.
Well, they're they're probably, I got them in here, but they're, but they're not up to date, I don't want to give you something that's, you know, six months.
Yes, Mark.
I will be giving you, uh, at the ask of the meeting today, the list of all the R projects, and they are. Uh, you'll be getting, so I know you'll want sad stuff.
Project you talked about, so.
All of it is all.
All the R ones are on, just so you know.
And and also, gentlemen, whenever you hear the word public hearing. Right away, that means break your phone out, put on your calendar, because that we have to be there for the public hearings, so those are evening events. And Gary, thank you, I see this was on Wednesday, we talked, you're just always doing them on Thursdays, and said, well, we're here Tuesday, we're here Wednesday. Can we do them on Wednesday, get it, so we need to complete a full day since we're here, and then conclude it with a meeting. Um, and that that would ensure better participation by all three of us. All right, yeah, Commissioner, I do plan on doing that, public hearing, the vehicle Wednesday instead of Thursdays. Is that, uh, acceptable to the other board member? Okay.
Commissioner? Okay, so, please, do you have things on the schedule?
We already. Yeah, there's even more members. Sorry, yes, uh, Commissioners, uh, Smith Stewart, uh, Road Sewer Project, that one is scheduled for. This is the twenty third or twenty fourth. Yeah, that's the last time I did it, Thursday, would you request me a sir? Twenty third. I I don't have it with me. Well, I will get a former, uh, formal.
Song, chant.
I'll send over some facts.
Thank you, Gary. Moving on to twenty-six, reappoint Mr. Keith Easton as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Services Board for an additional four-year term. Commencing January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, to reappoint Mrs. Lori Richardson as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Service Board, an additional four-year term. Period commencing January one, twenty twenty-five, ending December thirty-one, twenty-eight.
We have our services director here.
I have one more, one more, um, to make Commissioners' regular meeting agenda date, it's January twelfth. Uh, that read, reappoint Mr. Kevin Gabbit as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Services Board for an additional three-year. Period commencing January one, twenty twenty-two and ending, uh, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, the amendment is necessary. To extend Mr. Gabbit's term by one year to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you for doing so quickly, we found ourselves in this unique situation where, uh, five of our seven coordinators were suspended. At the end of last year, so doesn't have the way I have to, so this will help us to have a board for a year. And we still have two vacancies, and I have the daddy and my mother as well. I have that right, okay.
Denying to adopt the resolution of the County of Trumbull County, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial. America Two Fifty O H. Know anything about, is it Danny? Or Martin?
That is a, I, 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 a project by the Governor's Office, um, America's Turn Two Hundred Fifty, twenty twenty-six. They're planning nationwide events, they're planning statewide events, they'd like each county to host their own events in each county. Um, we're gonna be part of the coalition with Ohio and the Governor's Task Force to be a part of what Trumbull County does statewide. But we have to start thinking about our own, what we're gonna do here as a county to celebrate two hundred and fifty years, might be adding more to that.
Uh, part of your Trumbull County Auditor, you know, we did, Mary Chesney and this D A R, so we've already been on this. We've been doing, uh, projects of our own, also, I would strongly suggest you talk to Megan Reed. From, and maybe cover, come in and, and workshop, talk about what, uh, historical societies, people have got a lot of, of small historical societies. And they actually, one of their projects have highlighted, so, uh, that's, uh. Uh, so, I, 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 wasn't big projects, so, historical society, uh, with, I have your secretary. If you're using radar, locating the revolutionary war soldier graves that are here. There are forty, nineteen, twenty, thirty, thirty. That's one, just one thing, um, even though Ohio was not one of the fifteen colonies in town. Fight in the revolution, we are actually, I think, second in the nation with revolutionary war figures, very. So many revolutionary war figures came here, particularly in our section, uh, in the western reserve.
Celebration. Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, I'm officially on break, now I am a fourth member of the Trumbull County Assembly.
Oh, great.
I just wanted to say, are you a member? You should be. And anybody that's interested, go to trumbelcountyhistory dot O R G, it's, it's a fantastic organization, as you know. Lot of the, like, what Martha said, a lot of, like, groundbreaking going on under Megan Reed's. That's the leadership, talk about a rock star, I know you used that term yesterday, I can't say enough good things about her. And her staff, and how did she grow the organization in the last many years, it's amazing.
Well, that brings up then, the Governor's Office once, when they asked me, us to appoint a county. Point person for this coalition statewide, so maybe we need to have Commissioners call a meeting. Or, or one of us have a meeting with her, people that wanna be involved in this committee to make this tour, they call that the, uh. You may wanna start our own committee under the Commissioners' Office, a side committee. With these people, organize them, and then appoint one person to represent us with the Governor's Office, that'll go to Columbus and. It'll be a part of the planning that way too, so.
What are we looking at? A one-day event, a week event, a month event, six-months event?
They, they, the state is doing events all through the whole year, the state has different events all over the state of Ohio. Um, I imagine, they'll be, it'll have to culminate sometime when they officially do it.
Which actually happens to be on a Saturday.
We don't know yet, they just said they wanted to, they want us to be involved in it, let us know they're doing it, they're sending us information, and then we're gonna have to.
Absolutely.
Figure out how to.
They've already started, and it's, it's different historical societies, they're using, for example, the Killian Museum has the biggest. Um, there, I was just talking. There, they have been so several of these smaller historical societies, small, uh, county heard really. As far as celebrating, but there are also projects that, uh, we, we want to do, um, B A R things to. Um, mark period of them, so it's, uh, great, she's actually charging members for, and, um, Mary Chesney. We're gonna mark her grave over, up there, work, up to be that, to specialty, we are a worker, um. So, we wanna do some more of that, and then.
We, we may want to engage Beth Carmichael for travel tours of Bureau, although she doesn't work for us, there's a board that we. We give them a percent of our Board Authority money, uh, is appropriated to that department, she has her own independent board. Uh, but she works with us on stuff and is a county.
I believe, I could be wrong, but, so I know that, um, that, uh, historical society has its, has its meetings on there. Already, different organizations, right, including the B A R, I don't. I was some officers go, actually, sure. Uh, but they go into the meeting regularly, I think that has already been involved, but I think, so I know that I will, I would start. Again, to see what's already been done, things that they're paying, to see where you guys can.
Should we include the Veterans Commission also?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's, uh.
Maybe we should start a committee.
That's what I'm saying right now, let's, let's plan, um.
If you would like me to do that, I would be like, yeah, or Julie, okay, sorry.
For something, sort of society.
Julie Green, do you like it to be a regular meeting day or especially?
I would say for it to be a, we could do a Tuesday workshop, then there's a workshop with that meeting. Uh, integrated into the workshop. That way we don't have to call a special meeting, we're here anyway, we can have them come in at eleven or eleven-thirty. And then just continue on the workshop with them, but I think we should have Beth Carmichael, definitely.
Care for the veterans.
Uh, get care from the Veterans Services, um, Megan Reed. If the both of you, Martha and, and, and you Julie, are able to do that. And then, uh, one of the Commissioners to be there, we can schedule or whatever, be on that committee, and then they can. If there's other, any other entities that are already meeting within those groups, when we invite them. Then invite them along, and then, we don't have to chair the whole thing, if there's already one there, we need to join it at least. Uh, but we need to do something, then we'll pick a point person, it'll be the official county link to the Governor's Office. To report what they're doing and share the information, so we don't have too many middle guys, got too many people in the middle. The Governor's Office did ask us for, who's your point person to make sure you guys are involved in this? Yes, the laws for our country, great.
Maybe we'll give us some funds so we can do it up right.
They are, they do.
I don't know if it's for the county government, but there are lots of grants that are out there.
And we probably should, um. Do a big thing, you know, that's sponsored by the county, and do a big thing with our employees, but for the community, this, maybe utilize our fairgrounds. Have something there, get involved, the Fair Board involved, I mean, that's a pretty big deal, you know, it's. If you remember seventeen seventy-six, it's, Tony was the Commissioner at that time. Nineteen seventy-six. I had a couple honey on there for you, but, um, I'm sure it was a big deal then when you were here, so.
Yes. We had fireworks in there, man.
There you go.
In fact, we cleaned the courthouse. Hmm, this first time courthouse, oh, over the exterior. You'd be a great show.
Sounds like a good link right there, sounds like we follow.
You just got yourself in there.
I think there's, uniquely, he's got. Uniquely, Tony has the only skill set in this room to do that. Yeah, let's, let's do that, we can do that, but say two weeks, um, start organizing something for, for the end of the month.
Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, Gen and Item Thirty, to authorize change order. Number one, for professional engineering services associated with Emmanuel Community Care Center Masonry and Windows. Improvement project in the amount of ten thousand dollars for a contract with G P D Group, uh, Youngstown, Ohio. Authorized Director and as President of Board, Commissioners, assign change order number one. Uh, change order number one is a net increase of ten thousand dollars, revising the total contract amount from ten thousand to twenty thousand. Increases necessary as a planned preparation uncovered, additional requirements needed to meet building code. Plans needed to go through a full plan review and permitting, and the increase will be funded through fund number two-two-five-oh-three-oh. Five-one-two-three-five-one-zero-four-one-five-zero-five-six-one-oh, now the note is, the original contract. The amount of ten thousand was awarded on January ten and twenty-four. So evidently, they find additional items that need to be addressed.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, this is part of the twenty-twenty-three Community Development Law Grant Program. And this is one of more activities approved by the Commissioner since twenty twenty-three. This is one of the last, and so G P D didn't work these to the other ones, and finally got to this one. And so we uncovered some issues. Also, these are multi-year projects. Well, the cost also goes up every single year for everything, so we're finding that more. And before we finalize, I did, uh, I did wanna say, Mr. Commissioner Bernard has asked. At one of our first meetings about grants for elevators, and I have a special interest in elevators, we have the worst one in the county. So, um, I had mentioned that there really aren't any grants for the maintenance of government buildings, but. If it affects architectural barrier, so I did reach out to the Ohio Department of Development. I'm just going to share the information and let the Commissioners decide, typically, you. Send out requests for proposals for the allocation program every two years. The C D B G, that's pretty much guaranteed, you have to apply for it. That is an eligible activity under C D B G, however, that cost of replacing the elevator in our building. Would take up most of the allocation, and then it would not be able to be afforded to eligible. But I did wanna bring that new information that I learned to the Commissioners.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that that is an option. Sure, sure.
Commissioners, here is one where I might need to get on the agenda for Bell Hard. Commissioner Bell Hard, Trumbull County Maintenance, um, I submitted this early December. Um, this was something that was brought to our attention with past Commissioner and, uh, the new two. About getting a generator for the, uh, C S B in the Velma, I'm going to, uh, Maryland facility. I got the proposal, I had the money allocated, didn't make the agenda, so I'm asking you to put it on the agenda. It was, I submitted it in the timeframe, just, uh, just to give you the agenda. And then, again, they're both sourceful companies, so sourceful is the state contact.
Okay, yeah, uh, let me read this, it's, uh, Gen Item Thirty-one, actually, the scratch one. But, um, to award proposal submitted by Power Systems Division nine hundred Kenmore Industrial Parkway. Out of Broadview Heights, Ohio, also known as Ohio Cat. Um, for the two new generators for the Trumbull County Children's Service Building and the Velma Pines Building. Both located, uh, in Warren, Ohio, the amount is two hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars. To be paid for using account four, the zero-three, zero-eight-zero-one-thousand-one-thousand-one, I zero-five-four-one-six. The transfer of the money from the account, nine-two-one-one-three-zero-one-one-zero-zero-one-one-zero-zero-one. I zero-seven-zero-one-zero, and appropriate accordingly, um. Other company was listed here, so that came in, Bill, or, that came in the lowest bid with Cat.
Yes.
And, uh, B P S Parkide Power was two, two hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars. Um. I, I don't know.
Yes, I have the fund numbers, uh, we'll discuss it with the other office.
Yeah, we appropriated that, so approved it, and then we put it in no fund, and they just, we needed a way to get bids on this thing, this was, uh. Yeah, beginning of summer, we realized that they, that, when we were having power out, just storms and stuff, that these buildings were a lot vulnerable. And these, uh, these buildings house, um. Patients, guests, I guess recall, families sometimes, yeah, but it is children-related, they said we can't let them. You know, it's, it's traumatic experience, losing power as it is, and especially with someone mentally challenged and, and, uh. Children with disabilities that are there, or from unfortunate circumstances, this was something that, um. All three of us voted as appropriate.
Information added to the agenda.
Sure. Okay, well, any questions, and anyone?
Sure. Bill? I have, I have another item.
Okay.
Um, I'm asking if that ends the regular meeting, to perfect something for the next meeting coming. We're, since we're done, um, this started, Doc Town. So, we have a, uh, change order that we need to take care of before you, this happened with the review. The Doc Town location, and now that we're adding our subject, but outside the street route, we said this, we need to discuss the Doc Town. So, the, how we're gonna, uh, need to order and show them, so this is the change order for that. Um, we do have a leftover balance of the, uh, donated funds of seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollar. But it'd be a balance of thirty-two thousand three hundred fifty-one seventy-five.
You want to decide it the next week.
That, yeah, this discussion, so I have a permission, I'll try to write the time and date.
Sure, Lori, do you want to take this over, you know?
Well, I, I guess with this, when it comes to Doc Town, nine-one-one corner, those were kinda knee-deep to waist-deep in already. And I, I would ask that the two other Commissioners, just bring yourself up to speed as quick as you can. Meet with the Doc Town first, meet with the corner first, meet with Tacy first to do, if you're gonna do tours of the facilities in county. Uh, prioritize those three departments to be your first three that you hit, to bring yourself up to speed on this stuff, and then what I would like to see happen. We're gonna be losing Mr. Hart in a month, he's been our point guy in the Doc Town, um. And, and many other projects, but that's something maybe to prioritize at least on the status of this. And I was hoping that between the three of us, each of us can kinda pick one of those to kinda champion. I know Rick, you'd express an interest in the Doc Town, seemed like more than others.
I've been there.
I, I've been kinda knee, waist-deep in the corner and the nine-one-one center, but I could split that, that was Commissioner Bernard and. That way we don't, we're not all three replicating each other's work. That way we don't, we're not all three replicating each other's work. Now, but I think this is something where. With this here. I don't want to make any decisions or even ask you to make decisions till you go and get. Meet with Bill. Meet with the dog ward and see exactly where we are with this. And same with the other buildings that that would be unfair. Just for me to say, hey, let's do this, this or that and. Just stop me and bring yourself up.
I mean, I have been there, meet with them to discuss what.
But look at the facility where the dog pound's gonna be. Bring yourself on where we are as far as what we've appropriated, what funds we have. Yes. And you know, look at the facility where they are now. Look at the one in Bianna. Sit with the dog ward and hear a few points. But but how you feel like, okay, here's where we've been and let Bill maybe spend a. An hour with Bill. We looked at this facility. We looked at this property. We looked at this. Here's where we are in the process right now, and that's something that I would I would ask. Um.
I mean, I've been to the workshops. I'm familiar with. You know, Dogtown in general, where we look and where we're at now. Um, my. Mister Chair, my only question is that the budget here. Was property. That the new dog pound is going to be located on. So there may be some financial problems with.
Well, my my, that's a personal fear that I had that I brought up too. Is Animal Welfare League came us for two hundred fifty thousand dollars last winter to get through the year. They were out of funds. I don't know where they are financially this year. Hopefully they're financially stable. My biggest worry is. We start to build our property. We put a two-point-eight million dollar building up. And then they say we're broke and now we got their couple million dollar building vacant next to us. We need to make sure there's stability on that property. For us.
Commissioners, um, that's been done in adhesments. So whatever happens to the A W L. Side of the county property. We're secure. We have an easement for the driveway. Parking, an easement for the lines that we just want that goes through our property that lost now. Anything that happens to that facility, we supplement. For the agents, so. Property is free.
I think his concern is not. That and and maybe I'm I understand, misunderstood, but I'm sure. The concern is not, do we own our property? Do we have the rights to all that?
Yes.
Our concern is not that. I don't think either concern is that. The concern is. That if A W L goes on here. Part of the attraction of being close to that is that we work together.
Well, and not only that, they may have a big building there that fits our needs. You know, I don't want to push any, I I'm hundred percent. But hoping that Animal Welfare League continues to do what they do every single day. I know they're adding humane agents. That we would be lost in this county without the service they provide. But stability wise. I want to make sure that they are financed. They're gonna be there in that building. We don't want a neighbor coming in that's uh. Marijuana dispensary or whatever. If there's, if they have a big building there, then. You know. They just utilize those animals right now, and then we're gonna build another animal facility next to it. I just think we need to have the talk with the member of their Animal Welfare League Board, just to see what their. Two, five, ten year plan is to make sure. Okay, you're gonna be here. You don't need help from us. You're not gonna leave and sell your building or get out of your building for any reason in the next. Couple of years, you know, that's that's all I'm saying with that. Being that they did come to us once and say, hey, we need this, we're. We're out of business. You know, we we gave them that. Gift. Yeah, we don't have that. Our funds are other funds to do that right now, so there is no other gift to give them to keep them afloat. We hope that they're on their own two feet, strong enough, valid. They're gonna be a neighbor of ours.
Part of it, you're just also, you guys need to. Two things, prioritize these three projects. Figure out. And so it's talk about, oh, we want to do this, we want to do this, but we've got to figure out. What's the support part of it? How much is the cost? And where do we? So I I I understand that the need to kind of try to move forward, but I wouldn't move forward. With anything, any additional things on any of this. Until you've figured out what you want to do.
We we have our. We have our general fund. We have another fund that's lottery. We also have a fund. That was given to us by the clerk of court, so she left with two million dollars in it. That she wants to go to a special project that's to include. Something like this, something where we wouldn't have money for something where it's a gift from her department. To continue on, so we have two million dollars in that. So if we wanted to say, hey, let's do nine one one center today, we got the money for it, or let's do the dog pound. We got the money, or let's do the corner. But we need to figure out what's the wisest use of that fund. She doesn't want it, or the intent of it was. And the understanding with us was not just going to be diluted in our general fund to go pay salaries, get raises, union contracts. It's, this was money she saved for twenty years for a special rainy day. These are our rainy day projects. We've got these three. And then the other one that I added to it, which uh you. Need to learn about a little too is. Mosquito Lake Region Feasibility Study that goes from the county line to Weathersfield. We have an opportunity with the Corps of Engineers. Where they will do a half million dollar. Comprehensive study of the whole region. Um, development. Wide study, waterway study, soil type, the whole nine yards for that region center of the county. If we come up with two fifty, they'll match the two fifty and they'll do the study for us. Be like a three year study. So those are four things that are on the table that. I prioritize this kind of top four things. Now, of course. We've got a TIF potentially. Um, for the Pine Avenue project there. We've got other things economically through the county that are all through here. I mean, there's a million needs we can do, but. The special ones right now, the hot ones on our radars. The corner is gonna be working in a garage this summer in a hot garage, no air conditioning. Um, we gotta find a place for the corner. The dog pound, we've already seen that this. Prepare that place is in. We need to find them a home. The community demands that. And the nine one one center is living in the basement of an asbestos filled morgue. That we need to find new digs for them, and we're already in the process of those. So those are the hot ones right now that. We've deemed over the last couple of years are the ones we're working towards. So between us, we need to figure out this two million. And then where we're gonna get the money for the other ones. We had a crisis in the last board. The elevator broke. Like, what do we do with that? And Martha was able to work with us, have a little bond to get the elevator, hundred thousand for the elevator. And we were able to get the elevator done. It's fixed. It's over and done with. So we got through that one. We're in the process of paying for it now, of course.
And actually, if if you wouldn't, I I kind of liked to interview. Barbara Christie out here to actually talk about her.
That's awesome.
So I would like to, she has some.
Well, before we go here, um. Commissioner Lloyd, I don't know if you saw this morning, we were uh. Congressman Joyce. On that bill for um. mosquito. Uh, there's a water study.
Yes.
Passed in that bill. Maybe. Maybe some of that money is available. To do what we like to do. I mean. I don't think we know.
It may be the whole amount. That he was working towards that, so it may be the whole amount.
In that bill, you know what, we need to contact his office.
Right.
Soon as they can tell us that, you know.
Right there, knock one off the list. I'm hoping that works. And I know he's working to do that.
Yeah, so so we just need to have some contact on that and um. Hopefully that can help us out there, but.
And I'm gonna let. Christie talk about this and like give a little explanations about no person on. Um, and we're happy, we can have to start working towards our um note, which.
It's very hard at your office, um. Our debt, our notes could be issued in twenty twenty-four, our due March fourteen. Sure, on, sorry, March thirteen, twenty twenty-five. Uh. This is the list here, the prior issuance is what we. Did in twenty twenty-four. The elevators were eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, they are complete and paid for. Uh, I believe the kind of payment was seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, some change. So we are looking to maybe not roll that over, uh, so we pay that off with the amount that was left and maybe something that was. The engineering route was one point three million dollars. Uh, we weren't sure uh on the status of that until this morning. Uh, we have one point two. One way, two hundred sixty-four thousand and some change was paid on that. There is a remaining amount in that bound, in that fund of a little, um, a little over three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
So do we know?
We don't know about returning it.
It's 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 almost.
So we don't, but you do, do we know what we still owe?
Uh. We can get you those numbers.
Yeah, that would be helpful because we're gonna need to know. And 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 if we're going to be able to have all of that done. For the issuance and because that affects what we do.
Some of those are whether contingent to close the project up, so.
So we may want to just.
Uh, the stone building, which was uh one million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. We're gonna need to roll that over. Only ninety-eight thousand has been paid on that so far. I don't know where building.
Uh, so we're getting ready to go after the R P for that building, so um it's still under the design stage.
So it's go hard.
And then the engineering office building, we took out nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So far only a little over thirty-six thousand has been spent so far. Uh, the J F windows were a hundred and fifty thousand. That project is complete, so we're looking to pay that off. Uh, now we get into the water and sewer uh projects, blueprint disparity was at three hundred eight. Three hundred eighty thousand, and they're gonna pay that off. Elm Road Water was um two hundred eighty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. They're gonna pay that off. Uh, Metabrop Sanitary is seven hundred and fifty thousand. They're going to roll that over and add an additional two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, State River Water Reorganization, five hundred thousand, which are also going to roll over. And then they have two new projects down at the bottom, Blueprint Phase Two, five hundred thousand dollars, and Pendleton Gilmore, seven hundred fifty thousand. That would be our new issuance in March twenty twenty-five of um just a little under seven.
And could you explain the pressure to the.
Yes, we first issue a note, we start a project and um. Uh, we get to like the final cost, and then when the project is completed, and then we can roll it over to bond. Now, notes are a year-to-year basis and bonds are usually like a third of the year. Or however. The investors come.
So all of what we're dealing with here are notes, nothing. The issue, the questions I was asking with regard to the um. The engineering roof. Um, we can't, we can't go to bond. Until that's. It does not look like it will be. Before it's a, we have weather contingencies, but we're not sure. We'll go ahead and roll over for. Here on that for the for the short term and then okay. Make the decision whether you go behind.
And there may be some money. It's like when I look at the sanitary engineer stuff. You know, if we got O P W C funds or we had other brand money came in, there's still a possibility of paying some of this down based on grants, right?
All of those. Things that are sanitary projects, those are things that. Either get paid for through grants or through. Sanitary. They don't all over the lot of things. They kind of pay their top down for the years. We're not one of those to bond so much.
Showing those new issuances down here, those may be.
Bonds, those all eventually.
And those ones are paid for through the sanitary department. They're not paid for through sales tax or general fund or anything like that, sanitary.
Uh, very new, bro, sanitary engineer. If you're, we mostly need these notes to cover, to cover the engineering contracts. That's our biggest. Costs out there pre-construction. Uh, we also need for things like clearing of trees. C P A, P T I fees. Uh, legal ads and the church. We we need to have some money upfront. But we don't get access to the fund until after that construction gets started. Uh, and it's mostly uh water pollution control loan funds that we are. That are gonna cover all the costs that these notes are covering now. So I may have. Um. But let's take Blueprint Phase Two, for example. I'm gonna have to modify person, I was contract to get us to construction. We're gonna have to go cover four hundred something thousand dollars or two. Move it to the next stage where we can get a bid out. Then after it's bid out, then we finalize the loan with C P A. And then I'm able to get reimbursed for their. Engineering invoices. After they submit them to me throughout the project, so. We have to come up with the money upfront, then get reimbursed from the funding sources, put them back into the project fund, and when it's all said and done. We have. Funds back in. The project fund to pay off the note at the end, like you are on Elm Road. Plus thirty up on the top. We're gonna lose some interest on it. And that's the balance, the balance I know of it. But at the same time, when it's in the project, when it's earning interest. So it's not a one for one. Oh, you're gonna lose this many thousand in interest. You also gain some back. The funds in our. In our coffers.
So really, it says we're in debt six point nine million. But we already know more than half of that is coming, gonna come back through like what he said, so we don't really need to go on a piggyback.
This is our annual notes. We could. Hear this because we have to start this process. So.
Page two on here. This is an example from last year, and these were due in March of twenty twenty-four. So it's trying to pitch you a basic. Final, you know, uh. We worked with Bond Council, a financial advisor and an under underwriter for all of this. And so these are the dates for those three uh people. So for last year on January ninth, the Bond Council started circulating draft legislation. You know, and then in January twelve, they submitted the O M A P application to the state treasurer. So we've already started talking with our financial advisor, uh, you know, this yesterday about getting this process started for twenty twenty-five. And then we are going to go to the O M A P treasures program again, um. Say for those of you who don't know what that is, it's a program that the state treasurer's office has so that we can get. Um, kind of accreditation with the investors for the notes. It makes it a little more um. So they, yeah, crediting basically, this is, without having to go through moody's.
Right, the treasurer's office worked with us and they, last year they saved us, I think, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, because of being able to get uh that certification. So we're. So we'll start that as only a little. Versus I knew it then, we had her, it was our trial run. Um, so our next step that will probably be having bring to you will be that draft, uh, the resolution. Getting started. Just wanted to let you know, maybe a little bit of education in that, so you understand.
About a year ago. Went up at one of the meetings, one of the public meetings that. We didn't have a really good rating because we didn't have enough debt. We and we needed to add more debt on to get a better rating.
Right, and that was sort of.
Do we have enough of that now? Are we rated higher yet?
But this O M A, I mean, the O M A program doesn't process anything coming. For Chrissy, Chrissy's time, and it's a good program that gives it.
I'd rather have no debt, a bad rating.
Right, I just, we didn't have a good credit rating, so we weren't making enough money more to pay off.
But any rating at all, and when we went out to note issuance, it reflected in the investors and their interest in our notes. Um, last year we did the uh O M A program through the state treasurer's office. We got a rating through them and the best. We could tell the difference with the um offers that we got through the investors and the interest rating.
So by having a better rating, we paid less interest.
Any other questions for Christine? And while she's still here, I'll go to one of the other things that uh she and I have been working on, um. She's going to have a summary and a narrative for you about um. All of the budget requests and what the money that's available. She'll have that to you uh for the end of the day Friday. So watch your emails, it will be emailed. And we would like to meet with you as soon as we can. Um, unfortunately, I'm not available next Tuesday. Um, I have an obligation, if they require that you leave the building at eleven thirty. Uh, but we'd like to, to come to you at the end of next week's legislature meeting. We can sit down with you and uh go over all of this and then kind of get um. Where you guys are at with these requests and um you do want. Christie and I both feel like it's really important. Last year she worked very hard. Um, and we kind of did it a little rewind, a little bit on it. And we'd like to for you guys to decide. Where you want this money to go generally, and then we'll work with the departments to try to get them within those those different. So we'll show you what money we have. And uh. What people want, and I will tell you, we are at a large variance in what. So you guys are gonna have to do some cutting. Uh, but we want to meet with you and that. Is that okay with you guys to meet after?
Yeah, can we need to, we need to call a special meeting for that, to make decisions on that, rather than keep it public here for this.
If I may, I think that you really need to sit down and look at everything first. I mean, are you gonna really be making decisions in that meeting where you're cutting?
Yeah, they'll lead the decisions. If we are meeting with someone that's gonna lead to us doing a vote.
But you're gonna be discussing all this in public, which I'm not saying is a bad thing, but I think that you should wait until you have a final budget. Because you're gonna be discussing all these budgets for departments. That you don't necessarily know that you're gonna lie on the end, right? And then that's. And then that's gonna be publicized, no offense, Ray, but, right? So when you, that's not your final budget, so why, right, why alarm? I guess you guys do what you want to do, but I, I, I am.
I think, I mean.
I would, I would be.
Can they just do, it's, it's so public, you keep the public, public wants to be here, they can be. So we just cover it as the, as the, and then otherwise, I'm probably to wait till workshop, but it don't work though. But I just, we want to do it as quickly as possible.
Built-in so prosecutor's office, uh, if you're doing it as part of your regular meeting, you can discuss anything. So if you make this agenda item thirty one, that, you know, next week or whatever out of uh and you want to discuss it, even if you guys wanted to move, if IT could accommodate it, if you wanted to move from up there back to here as part of your meeting uh, you know, go through budget things, you know, you're, you're able to do that, but I, I do think it is, it is something to be cautious about, I think commissioner, what's right, you know, if you're discussing and deliberating on public business that's gonna lead to decisions, you need to be cautious there. Correct, yeah, if you do it as part of your.
Right, okay.
What I'm saying, on a Wednesday, we got thousands of people watching, we got people in the room, we got, this room could be full of people. If, if we did a special meeting just for that, then if they wanna be here to watch the budget stuff, they can be here, but you're not gonna have other people that aren't here for that reason sitting in on it, you don't need to waste the time.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, well, they wouldn't waste their time, they can. It's the end of the meeting, you make it the final agenda, I didn't discuss this, and, and you just, you just discuss it. I, 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 I can see your point, but I don't think it's a problem to broadcast it, you broadcast the workshop, it would be the same thing. Uh, you guys aren't gonna be making final decisions, you're gonna be making, making for general stuff, uh this is what we want to spend. This, this percentage of what we have, this amount of what we, as well as we'd like to put with this, yes.
Uh, my question was, are we gonna have those, those numbers beforehand, so we can book it?
That's exactly what we're gonna send you on for Friday, that's what I'm talking about. She's, it's going to be more of a summary, the bottom lines on each one, not the minutia like we looked at, like you had for that. But because we want you to kind of make a decision about what you, this is what they asked for, this is what we want to spend.
This is gonna be a process, and we're not gonna.
Right, you're not gonna make all the final decisions, but we can also, we will have an idea of what we take, we send back to, and what we want to send back to departments and say, hey, the commissioners have said, this is really what they want allocated for you. Look at your budget, see what you can do, so they're making a decision, last year, we ended up.
We'll know what the anticipated revenue is, and then we'll also know where we finished twenty twenty four.
Absolutely, and, and we, we have a lot of that already, but we wanna have it, wanna reuse things and have it in a, in a, we've been kind of working together to try to make sure it's a really understandable. Because we wanna hand it to you and not just hand you pages and pages of numbers, we want you guys to be able to understand it and look at it.
Right, then if I have any questions, I can just call you directly.
Right?
What do you think, I still think doing it at the end of the meeting, you got people here watching for other stuff that.
But it's, there's something.
I know that, but this could be hours of us sitting down, going through department by department, and I'd rather do it in a meeting.
What, you wanna have a special meeting?
What I'm saying, even if we did a special meeting at one o'clock, after we finish our first one, the next one is just budget, and we sit there and roll our sleeves up and do the budget stuff. It only consists of us notifying the media, it's no big deal.
I don't, I don't, but I don't think. Just to get back, I mean, if they wanna watch, they watch, but most of them aren't probably watching. I mean, they're probably gonna log off, but I don't think they're gonna.
I mean, we have our meeting, break for lunch, go back to the two buses.
One o'clock, whatever. We just have to get it done.
Yeah. Utter odor, just so we have like somewhat of a timeline, especially with, with um the two being here. It's important to discuss what that timeline is with them, so they understand we only have a tumult to appropriate the final question, so it's.
No, we pay for first.
Pay for first, okay, so this is just starting the conversation, but we need to make sure that we're on, you know, realistically, we're already halfway through January, we need to look at where we're at. So we have very minimal time to make all these breaks.
So when we, when we look at this, we kind of want, we, this is not the final budget, and there may all be changes made, and this, like, we gotta rethink, oh, we want this, or we want that, we want you to have the number surprise. See what people ask for, and then you decide what part of the budget you want to assign. And then our part of that would be then to go back to each department, each officer's office that has submitted and tell them in the meeting, this is what they felt you guys should um, you have, you guys look at, your line items, you do the trim. And.
I'm sure we did the training, and of course, that, you know, we got blamed for a lot of things, but you know, we didn't know, we did it across the board, because we have a lot of departments, a lot of accounts in the general fund. This time we would like to say, this is the top dollar amount that the commissioners have allotted to you, you make those choices, and then go back to us and we'll put it into the system for them, that they made the decisions on which accounts get.
And, and we'll probably do a timeline with that as well, to get back to us, so we can talk about that next week.
When you wanna do it, after one o'clock, what do you want to do?
Should just do it after. It's a big deal, I haven't seen it.
Well, do we wanna invite department heads to be there while we're doing it? To ask questions or not?
Take the first one.
All right, they are, listen, they've already made their case.
So me, not to them.
Well, they were present, they were present, they were present.
I think the first one we don't need.
Because if you, if, I mean, that's again, if we have, you guys set some amounts, and they have problems with those amounts, then they can address you, but the problem is, talk about hours, we're here days.
Hard last year, and it's very.
And we, and, and we want to, we don't wanna muddy this process and extend it any more than we have to, we wanna be fair, but we don't need to do the, all the back and forth, all the back and forth, if we can, we'll probably have some of it, honestly. But you guys are gonna need to look at it, you guys have heard all, you have heard from each of these folks. Have, have those budget packages. Some things have changed, we do have some new public, and I understand that, and that's probably where we may wanna have some of those folks come in and address you. But I don't think we need to have every single person here to do.
One of our thoughts was that we would give you what their requests to each department is requesting in the general fund, and a percentage of of the available amount, and then we would show you percentage of what they spent in twenty twenty four, and also this percentage of what they spent over the last three years. And then maybe you could choose a percentage, so like, maybe the auditor's office, you know, spent an average of, you know, five percent of the general fund over the past three years, you wouldn't say a dollar amount, you would just say, well, okay, we're gonna go with, they can have five percent of the available balance for this year. So not, not picking on like the dollar amount, this one is this, and this one is this, kind of like a percentage.
So then, Christine, I can ask a question about that, so if we do that percentage methodology, which is actually really smart, then it would then go back to the department heads to figure out where they cut within your percentage, so that way they could eliminate the apartment heads up front, because your, your margin orders were given on what percentage you want us to be within this department head. And then once you guys align on that, we can take that back and revise our own line level, so you're not all, and just, I'm sorry to be this way, but, you know, you guys just trust what we do every day, rightfully, so I think we've proven that our trust is there, but we also need to be able to change our line levels ourselves too, I, I do feel very strongly, you don't know if you're cutting a consultant fee, but I do. You may not know if you're cutting something that we need, but we do, our department head should be accustomed to know that. Yeah.
And also, again, if they come back and say, and we have some things, because we had some changes in uh where we're paying people out of that will justify maybe a little, right? So we, so we have, but some of those things that are um, some of those things that are coming in your budget, need to come into. Right, and we also have this another situation, but, but there may be things like that, that. They can come back, it can be a, a back and forth, but I don't think having a six hour meeting or hour long is gonna cause us with that. And also, I'll take it back to them. They can look at it, and they can make a response where if we're in here hashing, they're not necessarily going to be able to come up with cuts or come up with that, if that makes sense, I think, I think that we can.
And that was my concern about two years ago, but I think if you're doing it the way that you are saying, that makes a lot more sense, I think it will be very difficult.
I know we have the executive session at the end of our meeting last week, I guess we finished that up.
We actually, Christian, we'll have two, if not. Sorry.
So do we wanna break beforehand to get ready to?
Can I jump in real quick? I promise I'll be fast, um, T C, we've done the nine one one director, um, it was asked to be recently where we are with our projects. Um, we're in the same place we were before, uh waiting for the new board to get installed, to find out kind of budgetary, what projects we're gonna go forward with. Um, we're brief overview right now, um, we have an offer from the health department, move into that building on the second floor, free of cost, just uh county-based utility bills, um. That building from the feasibility study will fit our footprint of what we need. Um, the costs are gonna be around a million dollars for renovation, that doesn't include the technology, any of those things. I can't get hard numbers on those things until we move forward with our consultants, who actually do that kind of work, but actually making the move happen. And I can't do that until I get preliminary budget, you know, from you guys, I can't go to a consultant and say, hey, we want a new nine one one building, but we don't know how much we're gonna have. Uh, obviously, everything with nine one one is technology related, and costs of equipment, and those things are very expensive. Um, we just spent forty five thousand dollars and, and then last year buying new computers, because we couldn't wait any longer to see if we were gonna get a new building, we're limping along, we're in the process of installing those, and that's with money that we had allocated from our budget last year. Um, and we're able to make those purchases, and we're currently in that process right now. Um, I spoke with Bill um at prosecutor's office a couple of weeks ago, uh we can add on um our consultants, um the architect, significant sons, or significant. Or, or L L C, their partners, yes, sorry, Brian's right there, um. We can add on to our existing contract, we had them do the feasibility study for them to do the actual work for the build out and the design drawings and all those things, just add on the previous contract that we already have. Uh, we can also go out to uh request for quotes for consultants for nine one one for the project, once we get free, like you guys hopefully. Um, I sent those request for quotes out, and with the deadline, I'm, I'm saying September fourteen. So we will at least have an idea of what those kind of costs will be going forward. Um, we still can't move forward with anything until you guys let us know, we have X amount of dollars to do this project.
Um, Stacy, just to, because I think the main concern was the transmission tower, having proper communications.
Yeah, so, short, short term, um, with the Portland Bank Building, there's no tower close to there. Uh, we would ideally add another tower over in that area. There's a couple of different options we have, in the short term, let's say we move forward with, yes, we're going into that building. In the short term, we can connect by running fiber to an existing site, that will buy us time for a new tower to be erected. Additionally, I know City Portland was interested in possibly having discussions, as they might wanna be a partner in that project. Um, because they have their city, city building that they were planning on building, so it might be something that would be shared costs. We also look at doing a project with Marx, like they did in the Brookfield Tower, which, you know, how long that process has been, um, and it's still ongoing. So there are options for a tower, you know, where we could defer cost, either by going the Marx route, partner with them, maybe partner with the city of Portland, because they're gonna have to go to service layer, if you know, are gonna.
So in the short term, you feel comfortable with nine one one service, you're gonna be okay with that transmission, that big communication.
I mean, no, no, nothing's gonna be short term, because if you look at it, if you sign papers today, saying, yes, we're going in the Portland Bank, if you have X amount of dollars, full steam ahead, let's go. It's in two months before we can move into that. And in eighteen months, we can find the alternative solutions to how we're gonna connect the radios. You can do microwave tops, you can put a microwave top on top of a water tower, they have existing water towers there that are a hundred feet high. Obviously, a, a new radio tower is the ideal way to go, because you can get higher. Um, Portland is kind of the central area of the county, so that would add radio service to a lot of other agencies that we dispatch for. So by doing that, it would be a benefit to everybody else. If you're gonna put up a new tower, you can work with E T T, Verizon, cell phone companies, and maybe, you know, partner with them to where they lease space, and then they can provide that service for the community there, where we can make some money on the tower as well, or we could defer costs, you know, that way. Um, so there's ways around the radio tower effectively. I know, um, that was one of the selling points for potentially moving to the Warren location, um, because we're so close to Warren P D, we can hop on that tower. We'd still need a microwave top, um, so you would lose that cost, but that building, according to the feasibility study, doesn't fit the footprint as well as what the bank does. Um, and the cost would be higher, because it's all concrete, and it shares several other entities that aren't, probably related. So there's kind of those things, in addition, I've reached out to them since September of last year, and have yet to receive an offer from the city owner, what they want us, what their offer would be for us to move into that location, then I'm sure it's not gonna be, you know, quite as, you know, cheap as what the health department, because services pay utilities for that. So that's kind of where we're at, we, I can't really do anything until, you know, things, and, and I get that there's three other big projects that are, that are out there that, you know, have money, but I'm a little biased when it comes to the nine one one, that touches every single person in this community, i- it's not, you know, one thing or the other. Obviously, I don't like the hoes and everything, but you're spending two point, you're spending two point eight million for a dog, you know, Dog Works Office, and and you're talking nine one one that impacts the entire county, everybody at some point in their life is, is probably nine one one.
Stacy, we're, we're in the process of looking to put a tower up at the fairgrounds, which where you were located is a High Point, Portland, directly across the lake is the fairgrounds, is there a way to utilize, if we put the tower up at the fairgrounds with a, the hot thing or whatever you said from the top of the building and the bank, but you think that would suffice, or do you need to have a hard wire directly from the tower to the building?
You can do microwave tops as long as they have line of sight, um, as long as there's no interference, it depends on how far it would be. I would have to get with Faircom, which is our radio vendor, that would be a question for them, but I mean, I'm sure it's a possibility. I know in my previous counties, we did, we had one three hundred foot tower, that was our main hub, so to speak. And then we did water towers in several communities, because the cities were like, yeah, you can use our water tower, those are only a hundred feet. Um, so as long as you don't have a very um high terrain, you know, differences as far as people's levels, if it's line of sight, you can do microwave tops, so I.
Cause we have, we have the fairgrounds, we wanted to put it out, but there's also possibility just on the road, we have our ag center, that we own the property for that, and if we have property there, we can put a tower, that may be able to service the fairgrounds soul-wise, and the nine one one center, and we only have to do the one tower, instead of a tower, nine one one in Portland, and another tower at the fairgrounds. So what we were talking about is, she's talking about the need for a tower, if we move the Portland with nine one one, we're already in the process, you've already done some legwork on a tower at the fairgrounds. Wonder if we can utilize both, or if we can put one maybe at the ag center in between, that would service both of our properties.
Uh, that, I, I'd have to look at that, um, so, conversation, but I know that myself, speaking for my T has um, got some, a number of um, company that we have to go out with our Q, and use the then use the um, the language, just to go out with the, with the R Q. So um, yeah, that would be at the fairgrounds, it would be also laid on tower. We build it, it comes and just be putting on it, and then never goes on the top of there, just because on the power side.
We're gonna bring in income, we bring in most, Verizon and A T T, which that area is underserved, coverage right now, anything.
You don't have Wi-Fi service here in the south side. Card was out, like the Marx Tower that they're doing up in Brookfield, they'll mandate a generator. Out, generator, one, you don't lose any service. That's, that's what I was envisioning and looking at, and I talked to my T and talked to some people who would work tower in Brookfield. So, you know, we got some knowledge to, at least on the fair park. And she does.
Yeah, that would definitely be something we're looking into, plenty of ways.
I saw, so you need to put two, if we can do both or one.
Yeah, it's close proximity to the door, you know, you could probably get, you could probably get away from the primary, I mean, I'd have to bring the radio guys in.
I would think from the top of the hill there in Portland, we would have line of sight to the fairgrounds there, it was a tall, three hundred, three hundred foot tower.
The budget, the budget uh areas, so you said that, we needed like three million dollars to make the move. The health, the town, I hear you, that you only need a million?
No, a million is what's gonna be the building renovation cost, a ballpark is what they're thinking. That does include technology, equipment, all of these.
So we still need the three million dollars to make the move.
That, that's just a guess, I can't give you hard numbers.
But we need the money.
Right, we need the money and I can't, I can't go out and say, let's hire consultants and spend a hundred grand on consultants. If at the end of the day, we're not gonna be moving to a new building, that's a waste of a hundred grand. What I need to do though is get the consultants because then we can sit down and say, okay, you need twelve dispatch consoles. Those consoles, they aren't your normal desk. They're twenty five grand a piece.
Well, I, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, it's free, but it's not free because it's still gonna cost us some money.
One hundred percent. I mean, but it's also, it's cheaper than building a new building, it's cheaper than the renovation would be on the warm building. So I mean, everything's gonna have its costs. The main issue I have and, and I'm not trying to downgrade anybody else's project because everybody has their needs and everybody's gonna be passionate about what their office needs. But at the end of the day, our agency since thirty years has been in a safe, there's too many people here for me to speak like I usually speak.
I know what you're saying, and I agree with you, right?
You know, John family, I think spoke about how their plays are happy and, uh, come to my place, you will not see that. You won't see that at all. We're in a basement. It's, it's disgusting. It's deplorable. The conditions are terrible. The equipment, the technology, all those things are, are so far behind. And the reason we're in this situation is, and I know you pointed this out at the bunch of things, because failed to act in, in previous years and prior to, even prior to the last year. If you can't have a nine one one center and not budget every year to do some little project. You know, like this year, this last year, I just bought brand new computers. We don't have them installed yet. And every three years, you should be buying new computers because they're outdated, the sound is outdated. So it's stuff like that and then, then you get there and everybody's like, why are we here? Because we've neglected it for thirty years. And when it comes to, you know, personal safety, responder safety, you know, the public property, all those things, we can't, we can't let it go anymore. And I hate to say, I, I know it fell on you guys now that, you know, we haven't asked, but we can't kick the ball, the key down the road because we're at a make or break point with our dispatch center right now. Their, you know, morale's terrible. And not that you're gonna do a shiny new building's gonna help that, but it will help a lot because guess what? You're gonna have windows where you can see outside. You're gonna have restaurants around it where you can actually get a meal. You're not gonna have, where you're gonna take your foot bathroom break while you're so connected to the headset and you're using the facility in the kitchen, which is your break room. It's just, it's not doable anymore. We've, we've outgrown it. Uh, we're trying to get the staffing up. You know, that's the one thing I can touch on it as far as like our budget request. Last year was the first time in several years that our, our office actually got a budget increase from what you guys gave us. We stayed within that. We were able to do a few things. I would ask that you leave us alone just because and the sheer fact that we have, we have twenty people and we need thirty five to forty. Um, we have four in training right now, two are busting through it and, uh, should be done. One of them should be done here in a couple of weeks. Uh, the other two just started within the last two weeks. We have more interviews going. We can get these four cut loose on their own. We'll be at like twenty, twenty-two, um, which is
a far, we've been in a while.
A far cry from where we need to be.
Yeah.
But we need to keep our budget where we're at to do those things. I have a couple of projects budgeted for this year, which will be things that will make it better for, if we do move, where we'll save money because I'm gonna buy them this year. Um, that's a new reporter system for the plan. So things like that, like we're trying to do what we can to stay within our budget, but at the end of the day, I think priority wise, I think nine one one is above the other two projects, unfortunately, just because we impact everything. You know, how does the coroner get called to a call? That call comes from nine one one. We're the one that gets involved of a deceased person. Overdoses, all those things come to our office. Um, you know, I know next year, I think twenty-six, the state's gonna open up some more grant funding for nine one one. By that time, we'll be hopefully well within our project where maybe I can get those grants towards the project, you know, towards some of these, like what we're gonna need. Then reduce the amount that we need to use that.
Do you write your own grants?
Yeah, especially for the state. They come right out of the nine one one office at my prior county. Um, they, they had raised these grants before. I got two. You don't get a whole lot. Um, I think I got three hundred fifty thousand for a CAD nine one one project at my previous county. And then another one for a hundred twenty thousand dollars for, uh, for quarter. So those are two type projects that potentially in twenty twenty-six, if they open those back up, we could use that money and that would offset, you know, what our annual. The, the three million I told you, that's, to me, that's kind of a ballpark number I'm thinking of. Uh, a million for the building renovations and then probably another two for equipment technology and then to do the work. Cause you can't have just some electric company coming in and running electric. You have to have computer networking, people come in. It's all, so, you know, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Then, then we need the tower.
But, and a CAD.
We need a CAD. Well, I would love to do a CAD, but, uh, realistic, but to be honest, I mean, I would even be willing to not do the CAD if we could.
I mean, we need to, but.
Uh, T C, I met with the shares for this. That's why I was late. I apologize. We want to bring you in. I think we're looking, which would be great. I don't wanna get us ahead of all, but we are looking to, you know, redesign that and, um, all of that thing. Now that we have, you know, some new, some new eyes looking at everything, I think we're gonna find that they're a little bit more willing to help with that.
And I'm having to sit down and talk with them. The, the biggest thing with, with the CAD is right now, we, we dispatch for what, forty-three agencies total? You have some that have Sundance because the judges have told them, they have Sundance and I can't go against the judge. Um, and it, and it all boils down to money. And if I have the money to buy my CAD, I can say, look, we have CAD, we have R M S, we have the J M S. And now this is what we're using and if you want us to dispatch for you, this is what you're gonna have to come to. Um, that at the end of the day, it needs to be what happens. But I, I know you guys are in a bad position and unfortunately, you know, all of us are sitting there with our hands out, but at the end of the day, I think nine one one obviously takes priority over a lot of things.
Thank you for your time. Real quick. Before we continue, real quick. Um, you guys were giving a packet of, uh, board members that need appointed. I have an eleven member board. I need five positions appointed. Two are asked to be reappointed. I beg you to please reappoint those that are currently on the council that ask to be reappointed. And the others, it's up to you. That's all I have and I want to meet with Rick individually, you know.
And, and we do have you on the agenda for next week.
That's what I was gonna ask, on the agenda for next week.
We got you in executive session for next week to talk about that.
Oh, okay, then never mind. I don't wanna talk. We could do an executive session. Good.
Benny, just for the public's knowledge, I understand you bought the pizza.
Yeah, no big deal.
For sure. I do have, I gave you guys our best worksheets, um, just to let you know all the things obligated. You can review those if you have questions. Um, I will be glad to answer those any time. Um, I was asked if the information could be on the website. I did a simplified spreadsheet that I would like to, I still need to do more on it, but I would like to get your permission to, a little bit, bring your management. So that's, this is the simplified one with lots of the, of the enclosures and all of that, just to make it clear. Um, if you guys are okay with it, I can, um, if you clean it up a bit more and post it. Okay, so okay with that? That will eliminate some public records requests, I think. We're okay with that. The other thing is, um, is the board wish we to continue in my current organizing role.
I, I'd say yes, we have finished, finished thinking through, we can hand it off at the end to somebody else.
Great. Um, there are accounting requirements for the sub-boards and the R T's who have some accounting they have. Um, I've kind of been operating on, under the assumption that the portion of the components that fall into the office is not in the board's wish. The anonymous lines with stuff.
Yes, we're gonna share ourselves.
Absolutely. We're gonna have to lock, share it, share it maybe is great at that. If this is the champion, make sure they follow that. All right, there are two other things where you can address. One is
Yep, right here.
So the tip. This is the original two resolutions that created the tip and also appointed chair. Our issue is that, um, issue is that when we appointed it or when you appointed this chair, you appointed myself, who appointed president of the county commissioners. Um, we were in June, connect, we were in next, we were appointed, we expect, so, so we expect any longer counting. So we have to remedy that. Um, the other part of this is we sort of have a mixed thing here where we have people appointed by their position, president of the county board of commissioners, and we have to deal with people appointed by names, members. Uh, Nick did some research and it was our, I tried to attorney.
Yeah, so our big cog in this term, county planning commissioner, uh, our T I D attorney looked over, uh, we made a request to see if we could generalize these. So that we appoint the auditor, we appoint the engineer, we appoint the commissioner, uh, we direct the back, we develop the planning commission too. So that these appointments would just, well, we have elections, but just turn over. Um, while there's no rule against it, it's really not something that's done across the state by name. Uh, that was the recommendation of our T I D attorney. Uh, and we specifically asked about the president of the county commissioners, uh, since that is a generic one. Again, he said, probably name it, but wanted to keep it generic. Uh, he did give us a line, it's, uh, the county commissioner is selected by commissioners. Or, or, or also naming a specific commissioner. And if elections change, um, we would just continue to act to amend or reinforce this.
Well, one of the things that, uh, Attorney D and Z will point out, or put it out between Martha or any other, is that our will we, these appointments, I said you only get for two years.
I believe I brought the statute, Bill Dance of prosecutors office. I believe the appointment for two years. Uh, but it also was clear in here that they serve at the pleasure of their appointing authority as well. So there is no problem with the commissioners since this is functioning in the statute. Where five members are chosen by four commissioners. Four commissioners has the authority to, uh, you know, resee the new member at any time in place of.
And so, be this in members and not just over our office. And there's going to be, you don't necessarily have to, then it's your action, we could just do appointments, right?
Yeah, Bill Dance, so that, that would be my take on this is that the appropriate way would be to, um, essentially remove a board member. Uh, you know, if it's deployed, thanking for, for their service and the kid board, but then reappoint a new person in place. It would not be an amendment of the original.
So I guess our question, what are the commissioners to, one, one is I'm pretty sure that you want to appoint, uh, engineer first to borrow, which is, uh, for instance. And then the second one is with regard to the manager. Thanks, Attorney D. Uh, the president, uh, he boys, he would like to get you to serve on.
I, I, I would have no problem staying there.
I have, I would have no issue with the mission and have an issue with it.
So what I would do is probably prepare either one or two resolutions. I'll work with Mr. Davis on that and I will have those on the agenda for you guys. Because we're gonna need to have a whole board.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, so we'll put that on the agenda for you guys. Last thing I have. We had, uh, something, so elderly affairs has been closed down. And one of the things since things were winding down with that, that, um, Mary Beth Humphrey, uh, came to me about is that they had an outside bank account. And it was operated, it was based on basically of informations that were made. Uh, you can keep quiet, but your face tells it all. But there's about, a balance of about twenty-six, twenty-three there. Um, I reached out to Mr. Davis to find out what we need to do. Um, there's two options. Um, there's one that is a little bit.
Sure.
Uh, there's one that probably and that involves, um, transferring the funds, um, you know, have, used to be like, you know, high tax commissioners, um, this is all with that I've shared a lot of it. Um, so we would put in, we would make that application with, uh, uh, tax officials to transfer funds into probably, I would guess, senior levy services because that's inappropriate, closest use. Um, I think we're gonna need a resolution to do that. And so I will work on that if you guys are.
Yeah, and then we, do we have to officially shut that department down after that?
Yeah, the department is actually shut. Um, there's no, it's not, you know, the, there's the.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, I'm sorry. The, uh, elderly affairs has been, it has, this is how, yeah. We took care of all that H R and all that, all, all of those things, uh, well, for a while, for a while.
It's all outstanding.
Okay.
But we haven't, we have not closed that fund and got that in senior levy services, well, because we're waiting on that other.
On that, yeah. We just have that one thing that we had identified, well, not money, but that one outside bank account, uh, Mary Beth has been absorbed under Diane. And, uh, she is full time. She is running away.
Commissioners, that's a result of the state drawing up funding for that department. So they don't know more funds. We had no more use for them there, so we moved their employees over to senior.
The only thing commissioners, and this is not, right now, I'm saying everybody's getting, you know, taking a breather. Um, but we do still need to discuss the movements, but again, our goal was to bring them all over to the office of elderly affairs office. Um, we still need to discuss that. So I think they've discussed a lot today, if you don't mind, we can discuss it at another workshop. It's not immediately.
Wait a week.
Yeah, it's not immediate.
We have two buildings right now, one here, one here. We just wanna put them all.
Yeah, that's all. So.
One final thing on the bank account building, so again, Ross Williams office. Um, to answer the question I think that was being raised there is, once we process this, uh, application with the tax commissioner for the transfer of funds for a program that's no longer being used. Then what we would also do is give a resolution together, officially have that bank account closed down. It'll probably require some signatures from.
But we need a resolution to make that.
Correct.
I will have that resolution as well as the other one.
Okay, do we wanna take a break, eat and then finish up, or do we wanna just finish up and, and load it up?
I only have a couple. I, I have one thing for the county engineer. Um, as you know, the county used to, uh, put in drain tower upfront for the, um, so one commissioner, I would ask if you would, uh, bring that back again.
Yeah, I think the way that worked on it is the land property owner provided, bought, paid for by the engineer's office, where it's installed by, um, it works. And yeah, I'd definitely take a look at that again.
I think what happened was they contacted your office, office was built and, it's like, I'm excited you're needing.
Yes, we'll take another look at that. Absolutely. I know that would stop a while ago. I like that program and.
Yeah. Thank you.
These names are all the people that have bought dog licenses of film the first of the year. And so I am giving one of them a free license for next year. So I would like.
This is one of the names.
Yes, it is. It's a lot of names. So thirty-one hundred. Mr. Gary, one, so we only.
We're, wow.
Oh, okay.
He was, he was, he knows.
Oh, yeah, he was from Brookfield.
He was a professional.
So we'll do it again, um, next week. And also on next week's agenda, not next week, next month, on next week's agenda will be I say actually we celebrate your, January thirty-first, and then we can, as far as we should, we put it in February twenty, which we generally do.
Thank you, Mark. Well, Mr. Swin, I have one other, I just, uh, at some point, it doesn't have to be this week, actually. But I would like to, uh, for the board to put on the resolution, sit down to the state, the legislators and Senator O'Brien, ask them to, uh, go back the property tax. Um. They impose on their, on county residents. Just rest of one record that we've been working on, that. I think right now, I think five to six are just. That is six we have in this, in the nation. It's just not. So, um, can we put that on for this week or if you want it next week?
Let's do next week, it's really time for, at least to write that up professionally, so.
I'm assuming you guys are all right. I think it needs to go to the house, place of means to the house.
Address, would you address to the speaker each? Um, one, one announcement for the good too, uh, Mr. President. Uh, condolences out there, one at Sharon Regional Hospital, we've, we've been through that with our hospital. Those workers are out now, uh, but today, Insight. At Trumbull, it's having a, uh, open, um. Job fair from two to four thirty on the bridge that crosses over, uh, the West Market Street. They're hiring over a hundred jobs. They've got a hundred jobs almost just for nurses right now. But they got every position, custodian to specialized things. So for the nurses and the employees that's here in regional. Or anyone, you have family members that are in the medical field. Insight is hiring and an open job fair, just show up anytime today between two and four thirty. And then you can get an application, see what jobs are available, but, so there are jobs, good paying jobs.
Needed a hundred twelve nurses.
I think they need a hundred nurses alone, just nurses a hundred. And hopefully they'll pick up a lot of the Sharon people and, you know, we won't have so much displacement. A lot of our residents work at Sharon, in Sharon, especially up in Brookfield. Basery area and stuff, so we hope that they can be relocated over here and you get a known net loss of our citizens' jobs here.
Agree. Okay, everybody smells pizza.
Yeah.
We're gonna start the pizza in the leisure, so if that's okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
We have regular meeting tomorrow, of course, at ten thirty.
Okay, yes, Wednesday, the eighth, at ten thirty, not Thursday.
And elected officials, as Mr. Bernard, as he's fronting the, the, uh, services tomorrow, the goods. For snacks and refreshments. Um, so we invite all elected officials to attend the meeting or come after the meeting. After eleven, you know, if they, our meeting should be pretty quick, um, and then be able to publicly convene the new.
Come on, Ray, we can do it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.